Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our December 16th regular meeting of Board of Education, our last one of the year. Uh, call the meeting to order calendar, yes. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Newmoff is absent. Ms. Kalanowski here. Mr. Bush.
Here.
Vice President Darrow.
Here.
President McClellan.
Here. Please stand for the pleasure.
My pleasure is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we need to do tonight is approve the board minutes from our previous meeting. So if I could have a motion or if there's no additions or changes to that, ask for motion approved. Somebody, Mr. Bush, second, second from Mr. Darrow. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski? Yes. President McClellan.
Yes. And to tonight's agenda, any additions or corrections?
We have a correction. Board of Education members, under the Personnel Section, number eight, letter A, number one, Cassidy Fawcett has declined employment with the school district, so she's being removed for approval this evening.
With that correction to the agenda, could I have a motion for approval, please? So, Darrow, Ms. Kalanowski? Roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Superintendent Sawyer.
Thank you, President McClellan. Just a couple of things this evening. First, as we prepare for winter recess, last day of school is Friday. It is exam week at the high school. Exams will begin on Wednesday, so we're going to do extremely well as they finish their first semester to return in January. Winter recess ends. We've actually received a few phone calls asking when school starts again. School starts on Monday, January 6th. That is the return from winter break. In addition to that, this week, actually over the weekend, we received access, and Mrs. Smith is in the audience. Mrs. Unger was unable to attend tonight. I want to congratulate the third graders on our fall assessment for the Ohio State required test for the OST. Seventy-four percent of our third graders have already achieved the end-of-year requirement for the third grade reading guarantee. It's the highest percentage of passing ever at this early stage of the school year for the assessment to actually be administered, and actually it has the highest scores. We've introduced some writing units specifically for curriculum purposes at the elementary level, and we have seen the highest growth in the history of New Albany. Also in this test administration for students who've scored at the advanced level or beyond, thirty-five percent of the third graders actually scored at that level. So we've had outstanding results to start the third grade. We have rent requirements for the state of Ohio for students that are required to have interventions, and out of the students that have yet and the keyboard is yet to achieve the end-of-year benchmark, only five new students were identified that aren't already receiving services or intervention support at the primary school. So congratulations to Mrs. Smith, our third grade teachers, and honestly, K for two. It is not just a third grade teaching test for students to take for assessment purposes to demonstrate reading and literacy. It's actually a kindergarten through third grade assessment. So clearly the foundation is there, and congratulations to all of our teachers at the primary school level. Well done, Mrs. Smith. Great news. And last, certainly but not least, today is Darius, our K-9 companion's sixth birthday, so we want to say happy birthday to Darius, who is on our school campus every single day with John Hood as Director of Student Services, Safety and Security. Darius is an important part of our team, so happy birthday there.
He's sleeping through the whole time.
He's taken a nap. Beyond that, the rest of the update we'll do through the Program of Studies presentation this evening. I will tell you that one of the things that Mr. Freeman is going to talk about in the presentation is the new pathway for cybersecurity specifically at the high school. I will also share that this afternoon, this Department of Education, when I was at a meeting and probably an hour after I left, released the requirements for the Innovative Workforce Incentive Program. The state of Ohio is actually incentivizing schools to try to create pathways for students. The success of this pathway will result in industry-based credentials, and every student that earns a credential will earn $1,250 back to the New Albany Plain Local School District and Eastland Fairfield Career Technical Education Center. And unfortunately, or ironically, depending on what your perspective is, the incentive that we would receive to get the industry-based credential is more than the state funding we receive for any other student in the school district, and we have to apply for the grant to get it. Not that I'm happy about it. That's all for now.
Okay.
Something unclear.
What are you unclear about? That we don't get our money from the state of Ohio, and it's unconstitutional, and we've lost again because the governor vetoed it despite our legislative action to actually equalize our funding to be the equal to private schools in the state of Ohio. It's still a problem from my perspective as superintendent. And hopefully yours is support of education, because in the spring, we're going to go back on our campaign to try to equalize minimally funding with the private schools.
And to your point, twice the legislature's passed it.
And twice the governor has vetoed. Once by Governor Kasich, once by Governor Delon.
So there is support, but if I just need to continue?
Thank you.
Thank you. On that happy note, we move on to our update from please tonight. This is our vote.
Good evening, Superintendent Sawyer. Good evening, Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Walton, and Board of Education. Thank you for having us as always. Short and sweet tonight, but I'm so excited to share our first bullet point. Chrissy Pratt, a third grade teacher, and four of her students, I'm sorry, five of her students, Timothy Ghana, Allison Goodlett, Anderson Berg, Ava Joyner, and Amri Shakur, were selected to attend the Computer Science Advocacy Day at the State House, where they presented about the importance of computer science for all students, as well as computer science activities they were engaged in. Students presented for, I'm sorry, students presented for and met with Representative Lightbody and a computer science director, John Weissman, various engineers, computer scientists, and Ohio legislators. I've seen pictures of it. It seemed like it was an incredible day, and everybody there got an amazing experience out of it. So congrats to them. And Lindsay Harrington attended the Ohio Art Education Association's State Conference on November 14th and 15th. The conference provided many sessions, including sessions on adapting art for artists with special needs, technology tools for teaching and creating art, curriculum tools for introducing studio thinking strategies, and she learned about resources on incorporating elements of writing within the art curriculum. So a lot of great professional development on her behalf. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, to discussion items. Any work areas on the course tonight? Okay, with none. The next discussion item is our organizational meeting for 2020, and I believe that in discussion with you guys and Superintendent Sawyer, we're talking about Monday, January 6th, the first day the kids are back. We're back for our organizational meeting, and I believe six o'clock will be the start time for that, and then we'll have our organizational meeting, and then immediately following that, we'll all read into our first official working here. So just wanted to confirm with all of you that that was the date and the time, and that we'll be here then, I believe, that is the plan.
That's my knowledge.
Right. So mark that on your calendars, January 6th, 6:00 p.m. Work session will be written for that. Next discussion item, Mr. Sawyer, is the Program of Studies.
As we start, when January happens and we return from winter break, we begin the 2000, planning for the 2020-21 school district formally with families. So this evening, Mr. Freeman is going to present the New Albany High School Program of Studies. Mr. Kramer's high school principal, Dr. Hamilton, Director of Secondary Education, and Mrs. Warren, as Deputy Principal of the high school, have worked with Mr. Freeman to help with the preparation, and I'm sure the team will be available for any questions asked necessary. But Mr. Freeman is going to present the 2020-2021 Program of Studies information for the board, and our families program is going to happen while we come back in January. Mr. Freeman?
Mr. Sawyer, President McClellan, and members of the Board of Education, good evening. My name is Kevin Freeman, Assistant Principal at New Albany High School. Tonight, I am here to present to you the 2021, 2020-21 Program of Studies for your consideration. During this presentation, I will highlight changes that have been made to this year's proposed Program of Studies and provide you with an update on our upcoming registration process. The Program of Studies serves as a catalog of courses offered at New Albany High School. It contains a full listing of available courses, course descriptions, credit information, and program overviews, all designed to allow our students and families to make informed decisions regarding their classes. Each year, this document is reviewed, and courses are updated, added, and removed. This process takes place in collaboration with teachers, administrators, starting in October. Courses are submitted for approval in November, and we collaborate on revisions to the course descriptions in December. The completed document contains course descriptions for over 150 courses and a number of programs. The first section that I will highlight tonight is the Registration section. Based on feedback from our students, parents, and administration, this year we are expanding our efforts to prepare students for the registration process. In addition to our Annual Curriculum Night, we will be conducting two weeks of curricular activities. The desired outcomes of these two weeks is to allow for additional conversation and guidance about the registration process and curriculum options, and to better equip students with the information necessary to make the best educational decisions regarding their course selections for the 2000, 2021 school year. Beginning on January 21st, 2020, we will release the approved Program of Studies, registration grids, and the associated forms necessary for registration to the school website. Counselors will also visit all ninth grade humanities classes to discuss transcripts, support resources, and course registration. On January 22nd, we will be holding a General Registration Information Session for rising eighth grade students at the McCoy. During that session, high school counselors will provide an overview of the process and a general introduction to high school. Beginning on January 23rd through the 29th, high school councils will meet with rising ninth grade students during their study centers to provide a more intimate information session and provide students with the opportunity to ask questions about the registration process. Also at this time, these students will receive a ninth grade-only registration grid. We will also have a special panel discussion for middle school students currently enrolled in honors high school-level courses. This panel will consist of four current freshmen, four upperclassmen, and two high school teachers. Curriculum Night will be held on Monday, January 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the McCoy Center. The registration window will open for all students to select their courses from January the 21st through January 31st. Under the Graduation Requirements section of the Program of Studies, we added the updated graduation requirements for New Albany students. To provide more clarity for our students and their families, we have also included infographics of the graduation requirements for the class of 2021 and 22, and for the classes of 2023 and beyond. The information contained in these infographics aligns with the information that Dr. Hamilton shared with you during your November board meeting. On the screen you see reflected the infographic that will appear in the Program of Studies for the class of 21, 22, and this one is the infographic for the class of 2023 and beyond. The next section highlighted is Graduation Honors. In this section of the Program of Studies, we clarify the variety of ways that students can earn an honors diploma. At New Albany High School, students can pursue honors diplomas for academic, career technical, STEM, the arts, or social sciences and civic engagement. In the Global Scholars Section, we updated the Level Two course for 11th grade students. With this update, we clarified that this course is offered as a blended course and that all work will complete, will be completed outside of the classroom. The delivery platform has also changed from Blue Quill to Google Classroom. Students are also required to attend four field trips throughout the school year and attend the required follow-up sessions. In the Advanced Placement Section of the Program of Studies, we added that registration for the Advanced Placement Assessments now takes place online. The registration process actually takes place in the fall of each school year and has already been completed for this school year. This aligns with changes made by the College Board. To play sports at a Division One or Division Two college or university, you must graduate from high school and complete 16 NCAA-approved core courses. The NCAA Core Eligibility Section, in that section, we were approved for and added the following additional courses to the NCAA-approved list. The following courses are currently offered at New Albany High School and have been approved by the NCAA since the Program of Studies was last approved last year: Physical Geology, which is a Columbus State Community College class, Astronomy and Zoology. New courses for next year that have already been approved by the NCAA are Ecology, Mandarin Chinese 1A and 1B, and Spanish 1A and 1B. These courses have been updated where they appear throughout the course of studies. The following departments have had changes made to the Program of Studies for the upcoming school year: Business and Technology, English Language Arts, Global Languages, Math, Science, Social Studies, and Eastland Fairfield, Fairfield Career and Technical Schools. In the Business and Technology Section of the Program of Studies, we updated the Honors Three Programming, I'm sorry, the Honors Programming Three Class. We added introductory mathematics for engineering and applications as a prerequisite, and changed the course duration from one year to a semester. Engineering CAD is also a new course that's been added for the upcoming school year. This course introduces students to engineering, design, and build processes, and provides hands-on experience in conventional sketching and drafting, as well as computer-aided design. In the Robotics Two and Three Courses, there were some changes made to the course descriptions. Topics such as 3D printing, CAD drawing, and fabrication were all removed and placed into the new course called Engineering CAD. Cybersecurity will be coming to New Albany High School next school year. This is an Eastland Fairfield Career Technical School program that will be offered as a new satellite program at New Albany High School. This is a two-year program for 11th and 12th grade students and will allow them to earn industry-based credentials. The program consists of four courses: Networking, Routing and Switching, Network Management, and Network Security. This program is pending an articulation agreement between New Albany High School and a higher learning institution. In the English Language Arts Section of the Program of Studies, changes have been made to the Introduction to American Studies, Kenyon College, and Introduction to American Studies, English. For this course, minor changes were made to the wording of the course description, and additional course texts were added. Additional topics were also added to the course. A disclosure that sensitive topics will be covered in the class was also added to the course description. For the Yearbook course, the description has been modified to include students will now be responsible for page layout, some photography, story writing, and other assignments that are given in the creation of the New Albany Eagle Yearbook. In the Global Language Section of the Program of Studies, we have added new courses. Spanish 1A and 1B will be added next year to New Albany High School. These courses will break the traditional year-long Spanish class into a two-year course. Students will earn .5 credits for each of these courses. These courses are being offered to better support students who struggle with the pace of the traditional Spanish course. Offering the courses in this manner will allow teachers to provide a stronger foundation for students to build upon once they matriculate to Spanish Two. Mandarin Chinese 1A and 1B will also be new courses added to the Program of Studies next school year. These courses are being made available to help students build a strong foundation in this language before matriculating to Mandarin Chinese Two and Three. All of these courses have been approved by the NCAA. In the Math Section of the Program of Studies, it was updated to reflect that in pre-calculus, we will implement CPM, which is the College of Performing Math Curriculum, next school year. In the Science Section of the Program of Studies, we have made changes to the course description and added new courses, added a new course. Under the Advanced Placement Chemistry Section, for clarity, similar expectations were added to the course description. For Physical Geology, Columbus State Community College, a correction was made to the length of the course. It was corrected from a year-long course to a semester course. Ecology is a new class, a new course for the upcoming school year. This course will allow students to explore biology concepts such as environment, biomes, climate change, the ecosystem function, land use issues, hydrology, and species identification. Behavior and interaction using a hands-on, real-life approach. In the Social Studies Section of the Program of Studies, Introduction to American Studies, Kenyon College, and Introduction to American Studies, English. This is a humanities course, and therefore the same minor changes that were noted in the ELA section are made in the Social Studies section. Some curricular shifts in ninth grade humanities will be made in order to prepare students to take American history in their sophomore year. As part of the curriculum adjustment to meet the needs of all students, a high school is shifting American history and American government to the 10th grade and 11th grade. No changes are needed in the Program of Studies until 2021 and 2022 school year. In the Eastland Fairfield Career Technical School Section of the Program of Studies, the Eastland Fairfield section has been updated to reflect the available satellite, I'm sorry, to reflect the additional satellite location at Canal Winchester, bringing their satellite tow location to six. And cybersecurity will be an additional satellite program at New Albany High School. In the Cybersecurity Section, we added information about the cybersecurity program, and we want to emphasize that cybersecurity has already been offered at Fairfield and will be an additional offering as a satellite program at New Albany High School next school year. Fairfield, Eastland Fairfield has also added fashion merchandising and aviation to their program offerings. That represents the changes and updates made to the Program of Studies for the upcoming school year. We believe that these updates will help us continue to achieve the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Couple of quick ones. You talked about the, the world languages in Mandarin and Spanish 1A, 1B. If the idea there is that's good for students, is there a reason why it wasn't added for French?
Well, right now, we've had a, definitely had a need in Spanish Two. We haven't had a need for students in the French classes. That hasn't come up as a need for those students, but in Spanish, we definitely had that need to offer that for students. And again, the majority of our students that come to the high school can do well in the Spanish class, but we do have some students that have struggled, and we want to make sure and support them, give them that firm foundation as they move forward.
I was just, last, well, earlier this week, last week, it's maybe the other week now. Time is the same. So last week, I was at the college, what was the title of that event? The?
College, yeah.
The Junior Elementary. The Junior Elementary, thank you. And there was a discussion with the college admissions officers about classes that students here take, opportunities to get into the selective colleges. One of the topics came up was the whole idea of AP classes and what's available and how kids are taking advantage of that in terms of getting them access to college. But, so let's just say that there are students that are wanting to take AP classes. Are students in New Albany required to take the AP exams if they're taking AP classes?
We strongly urge that. We actually presented them, yes, we need you to take the AP test, but students can't opt out. So far this year, we had about five students opt out. I believe it was a really low number of students that actually opted out at the exam, and so the majority of them aren't taking AP tests.
So at how many, sorry, five out of how many?
Oh, wow, I forgot the exact number. Was it?
Ballpark scores.
I know we're giving over a thousand tests. I think we're giving 1,017 assessments this year, and so five students.
Okay, so it's not?
That's about 500 kids taking that test.
Think of the significance. Yeah, okay, that's good then. AP tests come with a cost, though, right? What is the cost for an AP test?
We're charging $94 per assessment.
Okay. And then just to reiterate, I know there's only five of them, but they're strongly encouraged to take the test if they're taking an AP class.
Yes, one of the changes this year with the College Board is, one, this has actually helped a lot. They moved the registration process in the fall, and so that way kids, this is before they really even got into the class, and so kids are registering early, they're paying earlier, and so it causes them to commit to taking the assessment. And so that's been a helpful change this year. Already, we've seen that more of our kids are thinking, have decided to take the test than last year.
Good, thanks. Any other questions?
So, Board of Education members, just before we get into the actual agenda for action items, I want to make two comments. First is in reference to their articulation agreements that Mr. Freeman referenced during his presentation. So the cybersecurity program is an Eastland Fairfield program through career technical education. It'll be a satellite program housed in New Albany High School. The teacher pending sufficient student enrollment and verification of articulation agreements that'll come forward in January will be hired by Eastland Fairfield in direct cooperation with the school district. So career technical education funding follows the program. So that's the purpose of actually having the partnership with Eastland Fairfield. It will actually permit the exposure for the school district and relationships with personnel costs associated to it, because CTE funding will follow that program. The articulation agreement, and this is why we're still working through it, also has a configuration that we're trying to put in place with Franklin University to provide opportunities for seniors in addition to juniors. The traditional cybersecurity program is a two-year program, it's a career technical education program for juniors and seniors. However, Franklin University also has an option that we think would be beneficial for seniors that are interested in information technology, specifically cybersecurity, in the future, to try to determine how to get them access to the core courses that are being offered specifically at New Albany High School for CTE. So they're networking, routing and switching, network management, network security specifically, and how those can transfer into institutions of higher education. So we're working through those details, but in the Program of Studies, if you're actually being recommended to approve this evening, it clearly states the pending sufficient enrollment and pending successful articulation agreements being adopted by the board in January, that then this program would come online for kids. So there is a caveat that's actually in the wording that we put into the Program of Studies for the action item. The last thing I want to talk about, that Mr. Freeman spoke about, and I want to commend the high school social studies department and the high school administration. There has been a conversation in New Albany High School for at least three years about the social studies progression and access to the US government exam that's required for graduation. It has been a senior-only class historically at New Albany High School, which has proved challenging for some of our students that have difficulty on the state requirements to earn the 18 points that were necessary for graduation. The high school social studies teachers, as well as the high school administration working with Dr. Hamilton, have changed that progression based upon what Mr. Freeman alluded to during the presentation, and now they will have access to government as early as their junior year. So it's actually very good for kids. Not all kids needed it, but if there's one student that cannot graduate from New Albany High School because of the government requirement, this gives every kid an opportunity. So I commend the social studies teachers in New Albany High School, the high school administration, and Dr. Hamilton for resolving this for our kids for the future.
And I do have that information for you. It is exactly five students that aren't taking that test next year. I'm on screen just to diagnose it. But it's 4, 541 students that are total who are taking AP assessments and have taken 1,058 tests. That's something we're getting.
Yeah, multiple kids and multiple sections.
Thank you.
Sorry, just out of curiosity, the Ecology class, which is a new class, is that something that was, did you have a number of students that were interested in doing that, or was it something that the teachers?
Staff wanted to offer that course, and so we won't know how many people want to take it until we do the actual registration, and so we'll have to see.
The goal was to encourage students to have a third or fourth year science course that would follow biology for students that might struggle in the science area and aren't ready for physics. So we tried to create opportunities based on the needs of those students seeking that requirement, but not yet taking physics, which is typically the path that they are following. So this would give them another year to prepare before they potentially hit physics. Ms. Kalanowski?
So with the, I love that we're offering more technical options for students. How do they, when do they declare that they want to go into some of these things and? And how do we work out this course load versus, like, is it electives? Or do they go a whole separate path?
So the intent is to create career pathways at New Albany High School similar to your career technical education satellite programs, in this case, it's Eastland Fairfield. So it's a junior-senior program. You're committing to a half-day that you actually will spend in cybersecurity. And the other half of your day will actually be in core academic classes still at New Albany High School. Although that's presently available at the Fairfield campus, our students at New Albany High School do not participate because it's an hour and 15 minutes from New Albany to the Fairfield campus, and you really have to give up your New Albany experience. You really go to Fairfield if you're going to do it. You'd have to be at Fairfield all day and take math, language arts, science, and social studies at Fairfield as well, because the travel time will propivate you from successfully fulfilling all those requirements for graduation. We're pushing to offer more of those pathways on the school campus. This is the first of many conversations. There's a medical something that's currently in the works with another institution of higher education that we're actively pursuing for the 2021-22 school year. So hopefully, that will come to be for articulation purposes as well for, again, students at New Albany High School, but it'll be a satellite program hopefully of Eastland Fairfield again, so that we actually receive career technical education funding for it in lieu of just general funding that we would be required to pay for hosting our own program. So we're trying to do those articulated agreements. But the intent of cybersecurity is current sophomores will have an opportunity to be invited. There will be a cybersecurity meeting prior to the registration process that we're working on with those articulation partners. So the institution of higher education, in this case Franklin University hopefully, as well as Eastland Fairfield, will meet with sophomore parents and students in a special, probably evening session, to explain to them what that pathway can be, because there are 25 seats available. It is a limited number of seats. So it is one cybersecurity program to start with. It will take 25 students. In the event, for some reason, we can't fill the 25 seats, we would offer seats to an adjacent school district as part of the articulation agreement that most likely we'll put in place in January. However, I am confident that our students will probably be oversubscribed, which will then lead to the same selection criteria process that Eastland Fairfield has today, because all of their courses are limited to 25 students maximum per section, with the exception of a few lab classes on the medical side. It can't exceed 20 students in that class. So we will follow the same enrollment procedures that Eastland Fairfield actually has and explain that to our current sophomores. The one exception to that is, we're still trying to find our current juniors an option that will be seniors next year to give them something directly through Franklin University that would be online. So it will not be a two-year program for seniors. It could be a one-year program online that could accelerate their pathway to another institution of higher education even beyond Franklin University if they would so choose. But we will have parent information nights early in January prior to registration based upon the conversations currently with Eastland Fairfield and Franklin.
And the fashion merchandising and aviation programs work similarly?
Those are part of actually the Eastland Fairfield campus, so those will not be here, but those are now available, but those will be specifically at Eastland Fairfield. So aviation's actually going to be in a new center on the backside of Eastland. It's a brand-new building that'll be available in August, but that actually is only 45 minutes max for our kids. So that one potentially, we might have students actually be interested in going, but they are actually recruiting current sophomores because that is a two-year program. So they would be there for the junior and senior year half-day.
But if you don't want that aviation program?
We can bet them.
It's exciting.
It is exciting. But unfortunately, as exciting as that is, when you look at workforce development and everything that's happening within the state of Ohio, students at New Albany High School do not typically go to Eastland Fairfield. We have six to seven students out of potentially 800 that represent juniors and seniors, just using round numbers, that would choose to go to the CTE path because they do not want to leave New Albany High School. So we have to change the face of CTE for career technical education and give kids access differently, which I think can happen here for the future development of what we're looking for for CTE satellite programs, youth internships, and youth apprenticeships to redefine the high school day, specifically based upon the work that Mrs. Lofton, Mr. Kramer, and Dr. Hamilton and I are doing in cooperation with the other high school administrators.
Maybe if we could find a piece of land out by the business park for an airstrip.
Aviation's expensive. I don't know that we're going to do it.
I'm not a certified welding contractor.
It's absolutely expensive. I can do networking labs. I can build an airport.
There's a really big airport, 15 minutes to here. Long runways, control towers.
The advanced manufacturing, we could talk, because that's another pathway that there's a lot of money for available for the state right now. But that's not one that has been on our radar in conversations with kids. We've talked to kids specifically at the high school. They're interested in cybersecurity, information technology, cloud networking. Those are probably the top three on the techie side. Then on the medical side, they're interested in LPN, which is something that Eastland is very interested in, that you not have an LPN program. So that I'm pushing pretty hard that we become that satellite for LPN. And then there's a new opportunity that we're pursuing related to ophthalmology based upon a partnership with another third-party higher education institution that's building a very large facility in our proximity.
Good news. I have a question about the, for clarification, the government department. So what, which is, which class is the class that's required?
Actually, there's more than one requirement.
Both of them are required.
Yeah, you have to have American history, US history, and government. Government, we, government historically has been offered in the senior year.
Right, okay. So what is the, what's the progression that the students are going to have to take starting in ninth grade to make that happen?
Dr. Hamilton, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Kramer.
But we'd be doing Humanities at ninth grade still.
Sterling, your phone.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
TV land came through you.
I know, sorry.
So we would be offering Humanities at the ninth-grade level, as we do now. It's a double block course with English and social studies. The social studies really isn't a defined program as such, so it's not a world history. It's not, it just goes with the Humanities course. And then in 10th grade, students will be taking American history or US history. And then in 11th grade, they're taking government. And then in 12th grade, we're going to move the world history requirement to 12th grade. They could also possibly take a couple of social studies classes, and we could offer some electives as well that might be different in 12th grade. We used to have a comparative political science type of class that we might be able to offer, or an AP world history type of class. So we could offer some different classes.
So for students that are kind of halfway through right now, what is the plan for them?
Well, we have an implementation plan so that it's phased in.
Okay.
So it'll be phased in.
Okay. So current freshmen, this is their, this is their reality, sophomore juniors?
Will phase in or get access based upon courses they're already taking.
But they will take?
They have to take American history and they have to take government.
And Kenosse, six.
The, the current freshman at the high school, nothing will change with them. So this has to come, this starts with our eighth grader, so class of 2024 coming into ninth grade for next year. So all the current students at the high school will experience Humanities, world history, American history, and American government. It's a three-year phase in process.
Just one follow-up question on Bruce Freeman's question. As I look at this logo for Shanghai here, John asked about the Ecology course, the Global Scholars Diploma. Could you just refresh me on what, what that entail and what that kicks in?
Guess I'm coming back.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So, so we have a program now called the Global Scholars Diploma Program. And we have probably, thinking 25, maybe, 25 students involved. And right now, it's, they're just in the first level of the program. From the slide that you saw, there's, there are three levels and for three tiers. And so they're in the first level, and right now, they're participating in four different field trip types, types of activities dealing with cultural awareness and careers and, and that kind of thing. So, so they're doing that. And then, so then, in the second year, they'll take this online course that, again, and there are also some field trips associated with that. And then in their senior year, or the third year, sorry, the program, they may, may or may not be seniors, could be some juniors, they will do a take-action program. So it's kind of like a capstone type of thing. And so what we're hoping is, there, there's a difference between this Global Scholars Diploma program that we're offering and the global, the civic, social studies and civic engagement honors diploma. But, but what they're doing for Global Scholars Program, Diploma Program, can lead to that honors diploma. And that's what we're hoping students will, will do, they'll participate. And there are some requirements there in terms of specific courses they have to take. And there's a portfolio, there's a field experience, and there are all kinds of requirements for that honors diploma. So the Global Scholars Diploma Program is a little different then, but it can lead to that diploma, that honors diploma. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Going back to where, the 25 you mentioned, that's our current first-year high school.
Yes, yes. This is our first year for the program, so they're all first-years.
First-year, second-sophomore.
Yeah, yeah, we, we offered it to, to sophomores. So we, we wanted a sophomore, junior, senior program rather than, and so we recruit freshmen so that when they're sophomores, then they get, they enroll in the program. And it's going, it's very successful, going really well.
Global Scholars is governed by the Columbus Council of World Affairs. So it's actually done in articulation with the Columbus Council of World Affairs and other schools throughout central Ohio. It is rigorous. That's why the capstone that Dr. Hamilton referred to actually replaced the senior seminar for the requirements. That's actually a requirement, so. But the Columbus Council of World Affairs, it is a rigorous program to actually earn that, and it is separate from the honors diploma.
But it could lead to it.
It could lead to honors diploma, but it is a separate designation.
Yes.
For seal purposes, it's recognized if you actually earn the Global Scholars Diploma recognition.
But it's not one of the seals.
It is not an official seal.
Not one of the official graduation seals that we talked about last time.
And what's the criteria to get into the program?
For the students?
Yes.
Application, interest, it really comes down to interest, if they're willing to do the work.
And they have an interest in learning about different cultures and cultural awareness and that kind of thing.
So the take-action that they do in their third year, can you describe a little more detail, like what that?
Well, that, they would pick a, a topic or a, or a project. It's ba, it's basically, it's like a senior seminar project.
Would it be a senior seminar project?
We're, we're hoping that when we get to that point, that it will be counted as a senior seminar project, yes. We have to finesse a couple of the requirements, which we're working on, but yes, we're, we're very, I, I think that will definitely happen.
But is that type of?
Yes, yes, correct.
Other questions?
I will send you some additional information through your email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is board policies.
Board of Education members, the policies presented this evening on the agenda are appearing for the second reading. We've discussed these at your last Board of Education meeting. It seems like it's been a while, but they are the same policies that we previously presented. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about any of them since our last meeting.
Questions? We have a first opportunity for public participation. No one has signed up. So we will move on to treasures items for the financial board we're on board this month. I have a motion, please.
Someone?
Second.
That's Kalanowski and Mr. Newman.
So we are running, as we've discussed in previous months, except two items that I would like to point out, and that was a receipt of $584,945 under general property tax or real estate tax. That is a fifth payment that we received from the city of New Albany. If you remember, last year, we received about a $1.2 million payment because a tip hadn't been filed correctly. They are going to go ahead and continue making that payment from the city instead of the county auditor. So we are, we will, and we know that this is approximately the amount that we're now receiving. So we'll work that into the five-year forecast now that we know that. The other item is $147,719 receipt under all other financial sources that I wanted to make you aware of. That is actually a refund from the Franklin County auditor's office for the fees that they charged to collect real estate taxes. They had an excess, and they have returned that, a portion of that to us. And from what I understand, the Franklin County auditor is hoping to make that an annual refund. I'm not sure how that'll work or why he thinks that would be annual normally, depending on those. But we'll see how that goes and then work that in as well. Otherwise, everything else is trending pretty closely to where we were last month.
Good questions? Global public?
Ms. Kalanowski, yes. Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Now to superintendent's items. I would like a motion, please, on superintendent's items, A through B. With that one change, removing one to eight, one to eight-one.
Someone?
Second.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Second.
Is your question? Is your story?
Thank you, President McClellan. Board of Education members, the Personnel Section includes standard employee action items required by the negotiated agreements with the Plan Local Education Association, OC Local 303, or Pursuits of Hire Vice Code. Letter B this evening for General Business includes the major item of incorporating cybersecurity as a new course offering for 2020, 2021. As I had indicated during the prior commentary related to Department of Studies, as well as the approval of the Program of Studies for release to students and their families beginning in January. Letter C this evening, as always, we're very grateful for the generosity of our community and the donations that we receive as a school district to benefit our students directly. Most of them this month include donations to high school robotics. They've been actively seeking community support, as well as the Eagle Scout project for a deck that was put into the weapons. And then lastly, letter D this evening, supportive of education policies. Your motion is approved based upon conclusion of the second reading this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Global public?
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Our second opportunity for public participation has arrived, and we still haven't anyone. So I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Someone?
Second.
Darrow? Second, Mr. Newman. Global public?
Ms. President Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is Monday, January 6th.